Eight million dollars is a lot of money. Um, but the reality of it is we're now presented with, I think, what is an opportunity? And uh, I don't know the answer to this, Dan. But it seems to me this is an opportunity presented, uh, how do we make a silk purse out of a sow's ear? I would suggest what we do is gut. Both floors, all classrooms of the nineteen twenty-five portion of the building, because so much of it is damaged. And this is an opportunity for us to rebuild that part of North Myana School. Maybe even get, uh, there are HVAC there with units punched through the walls. It's not desirable. It's not a standard. Um, there are other things and I would hope that we would, uh, even if it means we're out for a little longer, take advantage to, uh, properly and completely rebuild that first half of the school. In some cases, the spaces aren't quite appropriate. I don't know whether we would redesign any of the spaces. Uh, the office spaces and small group spaces, they were particularly a problem. But um, I'm not so sure I want to rush to, to do the project just to get it back online. I want the kids back in there as quickly as possible. But at the same time, uh, if we have an opportunity to rebuild a school that we were going to rebuild anyway on a different schedule, um, I'd like to take advantage of that opportunity now, not just patch it back together to get it online. Dan, can you address that?
Yeah, it's, it, you know, the timing is, is right. I mean, uh, a- as far as we have to do something, um, I wouldn't necessarily say we're patching it just to get it back online. I mean, what would be done? Would be to code, it would be, we would be replacing in kind to what we have now, except for the plaster ceiling. Uh, it would allow us to get back into the building at a relatively, uh, quick pace. Um, I think if you were to do something, what you referred to as a gut rehab, uh, with a, uh, you know, a redesign, uh, you're adding significant amount of timeline.
Can I ask you a question about that, Dan? Because I understood the demo from the reading the report. Maybe I'm not clear on the demolition. We need to demolish all of the ceilings on floor one and one, floor two, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have to take out the ceilings, right? There was significant water damage, right? So do we have to take out any floors or they're fine?
Take out any what?
Floors.
No, the floors held up surprisingly well. We are keeping an eye on it.
We don't have to redo the floors. Do we have to replace any walls because of the water damage?
There was a small amount of water infiltration on the first floor hallway. And the second floor walls, a significant amount of them are metal. They use metal partitions when they, um, went from an open style classroom to compartmentalizing.
So this is, this is eight million bucks to largely replace ceilings?
It's, it, it's significantly more than that. It's the entire infrastructure. It's the infrastructure that was between the two ceilings.
Right, right.
And, and the demolition alone is going to be e- extensive.
Right. So what else has to, what is the scope of this? What's the scope of this project? Could you just highlight the big items?
The demolition alone. So the, the way that the building is made up for.
I'm sorry, the scope of the rebuild. I'm sorry, I wasn't.
The scope of the rebuild, we have to start from, uh, once the, you have to take everything down first, which means the lower ceiling, the infrastructure, meaning the lights, electrical conduit, sprinkler systems, HVAC lines, uh, life safety lines that go above the ceiling. All that comes out. We have to shore up the existing plaster ceiling so it can be surgically removed. Um, and when I mean surgically removed, the plaster that's there is very thick and it weighs about twenty to thirty pounds per square foot.
Right.
So you'll be taking out sections that are no bigger than two foot by four foot at a time, very time consuming. Uh, the insulation in the attic would obviously fall out. You have to take all that out. So once we determine what the rebuild is, the, uh, to, for, for code, it's probably going to be two layers of sheet rock. That has to be attached. We have to have a design for how the, uh, infrastructure would be attached to the structure through the sheet rock. We don't have all those details yet. From that, there, there's, put everything back together then, put the infrastructure back and then whatever is determined to be the ceiling and lighting system, that would have to go back in.
Yeah, that was what I was saying. It sounds like the only thing when you're done with that, that, because you're taking out all that. And I, I'm just trying to understand, if you take out all that infrastructure, right? And then we have to go put it all back. I thi- I, I guess what I'm hearing you say is the only thing that's left is metal walls. And uh, floor, the carpet's all going to be replaced and everything.
There's no carpet. There's, there was area rugs, but there's no carpet, except in the media center.
Right, in the media center there was, right? So, okay, it, it, I, I mean, maybe gut rebuild is the wrong terminology. I realize you're going to probably stay in the same footprint and the classes will probably stay similarly in the same place. But I guess I had envisioned in my head, you're going to have to rip out all this stuff, your point all on the infrastructure, as well as it sounds like you gotta take ceilings out everywhere. That sounds to me pretty close to, I don't use the same term, I would call it gutting it, but, um, and I, I think, you know, that building suffered a lot with their HVAC units, the air conditioning units that are punched through the walls. They're noisy, they take a lot of space. It seems to me if we're going to go replace all this stuff and put it back, I don't know why we don't put in proper air conditioning, proper heating that doesn't involve those units and is done centrally. And if we're going to have to take it all out and put it all back in, I, I just thinking about taking advantage of the.
Well, we're not, we're not taking out the HVAC system. That's, that remains.
To take out conduits, HVAC conduits, didn't you?
Just the supply lines that are minimal. But the HVAC units are unit ventilators that are located along the wall and they don't take up any more space than the, the shelving units that are there and they're less than three years old.
All of them?
All of them. Yep.
Okay, okay. Thank you for answering the question.
All right, Ms. Kowalski.
Thanks, Mr. Bernstein. Um, a couple of quick questions regarding the, the, the new place. So we're looking at instead of four buildings for North Myanas, which are currently placed in, it would be two is what you're saying. We would have, be able to use whatever the, the back portion of the building and then find a second building that can ho- house the rest of the children in their, in their classrooms. Did I, is that right, Tony?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and is that, and how many classrooms is that that we're looking to fill or, or, sorry, that we need to relocate?
Right now, we have fifteen that we have relocated, but, um, to have them all together, we would, we're looking at eighteen.
Oh, at eighteen, okay. And then are, are we looking for, to, to keep them, I, I mean, I, I, maybe this isn't, the place that we're looking, are we looking within Greenwich or do we need to look outside of Greenwich such as our, you know, neighboring Stanford for a location?
We're looking, we're looking everywhere that is close enough that it's an okay bus ride for children. And I, I did share on the call this morning because people have asked me, um, you know, I think it was two, two years ago when Stanford had to take over an office building and into, very quickly turn it into a, a school site. Um, I spoke directly with the person who did all of that work, but that building no longer is sitting, uh, in the same, in the same format and that they are using it for a vaccine site. So they ripped out a lot of what had been done to create a school and they just did that a few months ago. We are, we're looking at all different types of environments.
No, understood. Um, and so when do you think you'll have an, an idea of what new place? And do we have an appreciation for what this would cost?
We don't at this time. Um, you know, that's something we have to negotiate. And then, uh, once we get to the point, if there is a site that it, it looks like it could be okay, the next hurdle is always, uh, getting a contract through legal. Um, they have, they look at the language very carefully and it has to be approved through the legal, you know, to, through the town department.
Okay, and with all of this anticipation work now, we don't think it'll be done in September, but when do we think it'll be done? Done by, we just don't know. I guess that's a question for maybe Dan.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't know that answer until we even know the design and what the timeline is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Olson.
Yep, thank you. Um, so there's a lot of, you know, probably families on here in North Myana's families that are hearing for the first time that their kids are going to be, as are we, that their kids are going to be displaced come fall, which is, um, a hard pill to digest. So, you know, and I understand there's proper procedures and, and, you know, it goes through a process. So I, I'm not, I'm not fighting that, but if there's just, I guess it goes without saying, but any possible way that we can expedite this, you know, to be a top priority, um, to just make sure that we're staying on top of each, each stage along the way to keep it moving as quickly. Um, done right, obviously, but to keep it moving as quickly as possible, I think is, goes without saying, is, is of utmost importance here. You know, um, we need to, I'm fully in support of this and I think we need to, we need to, um, expedite it.
All right, Mr. Kelly.
Dan, quick question, just to further elaborate on Mr. Shear's point. If we put the six plus million dollars or so, whatever the number is into this building now, and I believe we're scheduled to do a renovation on this building in two thousand twenty-six. Basically, and as I said, I think I know the answer to this question, any money we put into the building now, uh, uh, will not be a reduction i- in the total renovation that we're looking in two thousand twenty-six. Is, is your professional opinion that would be the case?
That all depends on what the design is in two thousand twenty-six.
You would think if we're doing in line with Julian Curtis Old Greenwich School, if we're doing a, a, a redo of the building to try to gain another twenty-five, thirty years out of the property, it's more likely than the patches or renovation we'll be doing now, uh, will not be useful uh, in the, uh, in the two thousand twenty-six renovation. Uh, is that, is that what you think?
No, I, I don't think that at all. Again, it really depends on what the renovation includes, but you, you're going to need a ceiling, you're going to need fire separation between the, the floor and the attic. So we're redoing that. Uh, you've got three-year-old, uh, air conditioning system. I, I don't think you're going to rip that out. Uh, again, we're, we haven't even begun to look at a feasibility study for, uh, for, uh, North Myanas. So, I mean, all that, all, whatever we put in now could be, uh, you know, part of the program. So, um, I don't think what we're putting in now, uh, would be ripped out. I mean, we're not putting in any, uh, new finishes other than a new carpet in the media center. Um, I, I, I think we'd be fine. It, again, it really depends on what the, uh, what the program is going to, uh, ask for.
Okay, that sounds encouraging. Thank you.
All right, um, you know, I know there, there's a lot of questions about the, uh, the dollar figure uh, that you can't answer until you go and, and continue to do the work. I guess part, part of our taking this up is the, uh, the schedule for the other bodies in town. Um, the RTM votes on the budget in May. They generally don't take other items. Uh, if we waited until the June meeting, obviously we would be the ones then setting the work back, which we certainly don't want to be doing. So I think that's part of what's driving us here. Um, I, I guess, you know, Tony, Sean, Dan, it goes without saying, as you get additional information about the, the, the cost in, in any direction, you know, clearly we, we want to know, um, if, if the additional monies are needed, uh, you know, we know that's problematic to add it, just we'd have to go through the process. So the way you construct your, uh, your biz, as you learn from the stadium experiences, is very, very important. I don't see any other hands. Um, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. Uh, the motion on the table is to, uh, is to approve the interim request for North Myanas in the amount of eight point one million dollars. So Bernstein is a yes. Um, Downey?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Uh, yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Cher?
Yep.
And Stowe?
Yes.
Great, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, just process wise, uh, I have been talking to the BET about scheduling a meeting. Uh, the document went to the RTM, uh, so that they can send out their call materials. I think they posted online now. Um, once the, uh, we'll, we'll schedule first with the BET Budget Committee, then the full BET, and then we'll be on the, uh, the docket for the April RTM meeting. So this will move forward pace and I presume there'll be lots and lots of questions as we go forward. And, you know, the closer, uh, we, we get, we're having design, the more answers we will have. All right, with that, then I'm going to move to our next action item, which is the policy updates. Uh, Ms. Downey, I think you, are you taking this separately?
Um, yeah, I think it, I can be persuaded. I was going to propose, um, that these are second reads for policies. Ninety-two seventy-three proposed and ninety-three twenty-seven point one. I'm going to move them both together, uh, just for simplicity and time unless anyone has an objection to that.
No, I think we need to take them up separately.
Okay, that's fine. So I'll start with ninety-two seventy-three. I'm going to move, um, this is, it's already been read, uh, at the last meeting and so for action for approval by the board. So ninety-two seventy-three, let's start with that one.
Second, I'll second it.
Ms. Stowe, thank you. All right, discussion.
I'll point out, um, I'm sorry, um, I just wanted to point out that it was requested that the town attorney's office look at both of these policies and they have said that both are in good legal order and legally acceptable. So I just wanted to make fellow board members aware of that fact. So it was requested by a board member and it's been done and resolved.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Kowalski, I see your hand.
Thanks. So I just, um, we're taking up ninety-two seventy-three first?
Correct.
Okay, so I apologize wherever I'm looking. My camera is one place, my screen is another and my notes are on another one, so I'm not.
Don't worry, don't, no offense taken.
My, my eyes are not shifting for any particular reason. Um, so I just, I, I look at this one and, and I understand from our prior discussion, our last meeting, that these were done. Um, and you've been working on them since September. And there was something that Cabe had also, uh, passed. You know, in, in reading these, I, it's, it just seems like we're trying to legislate civility, right? Um, and, and I think, uh, you know, tonight in particular and lessons learned, we, we just all need to be civil with each other, um, because those should be our norms. And we have norms that we are already governed by and we have a, a code of ethics. And so I'm just, this seems to me to just, it feels like it's just stepping too far, um, for something that we should be legislating for. I am, and also because I, I feel like it lacks a sense of standards and how one will be necessarily judged and who is the, the judge, juror and executioner on all of this. Um, you know, my, my plain and simple ter- terms of this is, you know, society works because we have societal norms, right? We've all agreed it, to behave in a certain fashion and that's just what we do. Um, the, the penalty by which that we would have if we are, if one feels we're not acting in a civil fashion in one way, shape or form is we're, you know, we're elected officials. We are then, yeah, not elected, right? We, we don't get re-elected. I think, to be honest, I think this is a lot what we're seeing, um, in, in Washington, which I don't want to bring to Greenwich. And, you know, we see what happens when one side or the other, for purely political reasons and purposes, launches attacks on one another. And, and this is what this feels like this gets to. You know, and I said it earlier tonight and in my other comments, if, if there is an issue where we think that we are not behaving appropriately, I, I think the, the proper use is to pick up the phone and to have an adult conversation. Um, and even if you don't like the person, and we realized tonight, there's probably a lot of people that don't like each other on this board, but to pick up the phone and have that conversation. Um, you know, when you're looking at this, it just seems to me that this all renders itself to what could possibly be a kangaroo court. And not to mention, I, I think it stifles minority opinions and it seems to be a push for the tyranny of the majority. So I just, I have grave concerns over this. I know Christina, you went to town council and that was at my request that I, because I felt uncomfortable with these. Um, and I appreciate the, the opinion gotten. I, I have some reservations with that. I mean, no disrespect to town council, but on these levels, I am not sure that this is their expertise, but thank you for, for asking.
All right, is there any other discussion on, uh, ninety-two seventy-three?
Um, I, Karen, I he- I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, um, I think the, it's always good for more communication and expectations, um, to be communicated clearly. And I think this is, is a list of, of expectations and protocols. And sadly, you're right, there has been, um, what's going on in Washington and that's perhaps why I don't know, you know, what prompted Cabe to talk about it. Um, but I do, I don't, I don't see a downside, um, in quite the same way that you do, but we can agree to disagree on that.
Yeah, I know, I, I.
You know, I, you know, I hear what you're saying.
I appreciate that, Christina, and I look, and I went back through because some of these policies, I'm not sure. I don't have ninety-two seventy-three in front of me, but I, I know it referenced other policies. So I feel like we're just, we, we have the appropriate policy and framework out there that governs this. And I think that this is just a layering on and getting a little too, for, you know, a, a lack of comfort into how far we're going to go. Um, and I just don't think that something like this, I think this skirts a line that I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with. I expressed this uncomfortableness several weeks ago and I had emailed you about it. I just, because I've, I feel like that, and, and particularly here, when there's no standard for which you're judged, it's all of a sudden the standard of what everybody doesn't like all of a sudden. And that's what worries me, that we run down a very slippery slope, that you get a, a group and, and I'll just say, a, a, a group of four or five that have, that feel like something that was said or done or certain behavior isn't acceptable. And now all of a sudden, it is now, you're going to be judged harshly because you have five people that disagree with you. Um, that's what I worry here. I do think that the policies that, that we have in place and the policies that you've gone through, and I know you've gone through to clean them up, are precisely what this, you know, this body needs and has, and those are appropriate. And this one steps too far for me.
Mr. Sher.
I think, you know, look, I've been on the board a long time. This, you know, the board at various times has been completely dysfunctional. Um, I've talked about that many, many times and it always drifts into, what we saw earlier tonight. It always drifts into that. And, um, it's really dangerous. It, um, people have tried to put in, because Christina, I don't have a problem with this where it's listed as a set of expectations, okay? These expectations that are listed here are the expectations that I've always understood the board should operate under. I, I don't agree, I don't agree with a bunch of them, but I've always understood it. I've been, as an example, very respectful of, um, the board speaks for the board. And if I'm speaking in the public, I need to make clear to people I'm speaking as an individual, as an example. The other thing that's always bothered me on this board is there are questions, my colleagues, many of you ask. I think they're outrageous, totally out of bounds. And, and, and I've seen many board members over time bully, berate, uh, staff. But the way I've always handled that is, um, I may hate the question, I may hate the behavior, but I respect the board's members' right to ask it. I never try to cut off a question. I never try to cut off somebody who's going too long. Um, I go too long. Um, I persist in questions when I don't get answers and someone's evading an answer. I just think this is a really dangerous slippery slope. It worked before because in our board, uh, we didn't have this, um, you know, censure and reprimand and what have you. And I agree with Karen. We saw how this got out of control in our federal government and it became essentially a political weapon. Now, we have to rely on the goodwill of people uh, to use it, uh, censure, reprimand, whatever appropriately. But there's a long history of the board not having that. This listed as a civility code, and I won't be on the board when this occurs, could very easily lead to somebody saying, I want to censure or reprimand because I don't think you complied with this particular item in a code. And it, the civility is a very loaded term. It's a very loaded term. So I got to tell you, I can't support this because, not because of its intent. Its intent, I think, is good. Outlining expectations is good. If this were listed as, um, expected responsibilities of board members, I would support it. But, uh, this could so easily turn into a cudgel and rip apart the board. Uh, it's just a remarkably, uh, bad idea. I realize this policy doesn't talk about how we're evaluating what civility is. And that is a really bad idea because it leaves it open to anybody's interpretation. It's just as written. It's a, it's a super, uh, bad idea. It's, it's trying to restrict people and this is going to happen because people want to behave properly between each other. This is going to, civility on the board is going to happen because people treat each other properly. It's not something you legislate. I, I mean, I realize, I, I can tell where this is going already. I expect this will go, uh, six to two, but maybe I'm wrong, but I, I just, I, I warn all of you who are going to be here longer than I am. You, you're setting this up, you're setting this board and future boards up for trouble. We are stewards of a legacy. I recognize I am the steward of all the people and chair people and board people who came before me. This is fundamental. It seems like it's trivial. It's not. I would not, uh, do this in its current form. I would rather, uh, move that this gets returned to the PGC for some modifications and clarifications.
All right, Ms. Hirsch.
Sorry, um, I was just going to say, you know, when we received this, uh, from Cabe, which, uh, has been fully vetted also by them, and I think it's been adopted by quite a few districts throughout Connecticut. They also included some, um, information as to the wheres, the whys and the policy implications. Um, and it does speak to some of the things that you, uh, Mr. Sher and Ms. Kowalski were discussing, but it does specifically talk about uncivil, it said the policy implications that uncivil conduct does not include the expression of controversial or differing viewpoints that may be offensive to some persons, provided the ideas are presented in a respectful manner at any time or place that are appropriate and that such expression does not material disrupt, materially disrupt and may material disrupt and may not be reasonably anticipated to disrupt the educational and or meeting process, and such differentiating, differing viewpoints are permitted within the freedom of expression guaranteed by the First Amendment. Um, so you know, again, I, I, you know, I hear what you are both saying, but it is clear that this was already vetted for, for those concerns. Um, and uh, they went further into discussing, you know, that numerous studies have taken place reviewing the effects of incivility on worker satisfaction, organizational integrity, pro- and productivity, and can be linked, linked to increased job, de- excuse me, linked to decreased job performance and satisfaction, that safe and civil environments are essent- are essential to board, student, and staff achievement. Um, and the free exchange of ideas uh, to, is essential to the equality of the educational process. Um, so uh, it goes on further about conversely uncivil conduct, like other forms of disruptive behavior interfere with the board's ability to fill uh, its appropriate leadership role and with the student's ability to learn and a school's ability to educate its students. Um, and it goes in a little further, which I can continue to read. Uh, sorry, are we missing a member? But um, um, anyway, i- it talks about the whys, the wheres, and the hows, and discusses some of the concerns that you guys already addressed. Um, but it's clear that they've already vetted, vetted this for that. Um, and I, as I said, I know it's certainly been adopted by other districts. Just to give background.
Ms. Kowalski.
Sure, Karen, I appreciate all of that. Uh, you know, and one of the things, for example, I don't understand trouble, have trouble with is, for example, if I look at meeting protocol, right, to ensure the board, it says to ensure that the board's meetings are conducted with maximum efficiency and effective, members will, you know, come to meetings adequately prepared. Well, who's gonna be the judge of whether or not you're adequately prepared? How, how are we judging that? Um, the, the other, interestingly enough, it's, you know, not interrupt each other during a debate. You, that didn't happen tonight. So, you know, this is gonna come up all of the time. And I think that, look, we have to, so does that mean that because someone got interrupted during a debate by someone else, that therefore we have a violation of the policy? And how's that gonna be handled?
Well, just to answer that, you know, we, we follow Robert's rules and there are very specific detailed discussions on uh, you know, on that within Robert's roles as well.
All right, I think that's all the hands. I, I'm just gonna add to this. I, I view this as the job description, quite frankly, when you sign up for, uh, for, for running for a public board, especially this board, I, I think that that is the job description. That is what we ought to be evaluated against. And not saying that the board should uh, should, should run off and, and use it as a cudgel, but I, I do think it is a, a good explanation of, of the expectations of board members. All right, Mr. Share.
Uh, Peter, oddly, I agree with what you're saying. I, I don't know why it isn't titled job description then. Why is it titled civility code? I mean, that, I mean, that, that's my whole problem with it. I, I like this document because it tells people what the expectations are, particularly people, you know, who have never served on a board before. I mean, fortunately, when I came to the board, I'd served on a board before, but that's a learning curve. There are people here who have no experience in their professional life on serving on a board. Um, this is a, a learning curve, and the learning curve is steep. So I think this thing is beautiful as a document of the job description and the expectations. Um, that's not my problem with it at all. It's, I take it at what it's titled. This is a code of civility. And we have seen this over and over and over again, going after people for violations of civility. I mean, it's so prevalent in Washington, I can't stand it.
So is your, no, no, just to be clear. So is your only objection to it in the title, that if it were retitled as board member expectations, you support it as a document, just to understand?
Yeah, because my concern is Christina, as I've said,
Yeah.
I think there will be subsequent people who will, I can see this happening. All of us are dead and buried off this board. We're not dead and buried in real life, but we're off this board. Okay, let's just say that. I could see somebody, I could see somebody reading this and going, uh, they meant civility when they, and you violated civility. I mean, I've encountered that more times than I can count uh, uh, on this board. You know, not just about me, about other people trying to do it to other board members. And I've seen it happen. And I've seen it, by the way, it's an equal opportunity thing. I've seen it done to Democrats. I've seen it done to Republicans. It's none of that. So I, my concern is, and I'm done talking about this, my concern is how it might get misused in the future by how it's constructed. Other than that, I love every bullet that's on the chart.
So, so Peter, do you want to make a motion on the title? Cause I, I
I'm not, I, I, I don't object to your cha- to the change of the title, because if it's, if that is a stumbling block, I'm not sure Karen would agree with you, Kowalski, but.
But, well, let her speak.
I'm sorry, let me look, let me look, let me look again at the document. I guess I
Okay, look at it, well, because I think Megan wants to speak as well, so.
All right, so, so we'll let Megan talk and then we'll, we'll circle back there.
Well, I just, thank you for the work that's gone into it. And I, um, you know, we did have a chance to, to look at this and, and talk about it beforehand. And I, you know, appreciate you went to the extra step to, you know, check with the attorneys and um, went, I think, above and beyond. So I'm, I'm in full support.
And I don't know, Karen Kowalski, if you wanted to weigh in about the title. I don't know if your objection's deeper.
Do you want me to make a motion to move this forward? I didn't make, make it a federal case.
Well, no, 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 but I mean, I'd ra- I'd rather not have, to be honest with you, because we presented it two weeks ago. And I, and I'm only hearing this comment now, which we could have had a discussion about before now, but I'm fine to have the discussion now, but I'd rather it not necessarily go back to PGC. If the, if the only real issue is kind of the title of the policy, I would rather amend the motion um, or amend the, the wording and have people sign off on it and we move forward.
For a moment, and then we'll, we'll deal with
Yeah, yeah, the, I'm just telling you, no.
Yeah, that I, I can, I can get on board with that. If it's changed to, you know, this is the job descrip- this is the expectation.
Well, if we just create, if we, if instead of the word civility code, if we say um, board um, expectations of board members.
Or how about board member expectations? It's cleaner with less metters.
I'm fine with either.
All right, so Peter, do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, um, which do you prefer, Christina?
I, I actually like mine, not Peter's.
Okay, fine. You know, okay, here, let me flip a coin.
Then you say
How about expectations for board members? How's that? That's, I just think board members' expectations is a little
Yep, I'm okay. So I've moved that we modify uh, proposed policy nine two seven three title from civility code to expectations of board members.
So Peter, before we take a second, that's a motion to amend, correct? I want to make sure Michael gets that right for the minutes.
Yes.
Okay, motion to amend.
And Kelly, could, if it should be expectations, warp, is it of or for?
For.
Okay.
Uh, it doesn't matter to me, expectations for board members.
I think four is cleaner. Thank you.
Uh, my motion, Michael, is to modify, to amend
Thank you.
Proposed policy nine two seven three uh, to change the title from civility code to expectations for board members.
Christina, do you want to second that?
I'll say, I was just gonna say, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on the motion to amend the title? Hearing none, I'm gonna take a quick roll call vote. Bernstein, yes, Downey?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
And Stone?
Yes.
All right, so the motion in front of us now is to adopt the policy ninety two seventy three, expectations for board members. Seeing no further hands, I'm gonna go ahead and take the uh, take the roll. Bernstein is yes, Downey?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Sorry, I missed what you said.
Uh, the motion is as amended.
Oh, yes.
Board members, thank you. Um, Olson?
Yes.
And Share?
Yes.
And Stone?
Yes.
Okay, great. That passes eight zero. Uh, Christina, why don't you go ahead with the next motion?
Okay, so now I'd like to move the adoption of proposed policy ninety three twenty seven point one, which has a number of sub-sections, but the first of which reads board member use of internet social networks. So I'm gonna move as, as revised from our last meeting.
And is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, Ms. Stone, thank you. Discussion, Ms. Downey.
Um, just um, the town attorney, while she said that she, that, well, the member of the town, town attorney's office said, well, it was legally in order, she expressed a few concern about two items in the appendix to the policy, items two and four, which you can see the revisions we made and which she has also said alleviated her concerns with those two provisions. So.
All right, discussion, Ms. Kowalski.
So I appreciate the, the changes that have been made. I still have some concern here. Uh, you, it, it seems to me that under the various titles for which there's a piece, right? It's board members' use of social network and then compliance with public records laws, okay, compliance with Freedom of Information Act, okay, social networking websites. Um, I don't, there's parts of this that I don't understand. For example, on the social networking websites, you know, board members need to periodically review the importance of maintaining proper decorum in an online digital world as well as in person. And this should give emphasis to the board members' use of Facebook, Twitter, and social media. This does not seem, as well as the next paragraph regarding code of ethics, seem to derive solely as me as a, or, or any of us as board members, but rather us as, you know, Karen Kowalski, Christina Downey, as citizens of Greenwich and citizens of the US irrespective of. And it seems to suggest that I can't have an opinion outside of my position as a board, simply because I got elected to being a member of the board, that somehow I have lost my ability to have an opinion about anything, for that matter. Um, because this is not, the social networking websites and the code of ethics provisions that, under those titles and the language below them, go beyond just your work a- as a board. Um, which would suggest that I'm not, and I'll go so far as to say, look, if I want to say something specific, let, let's say I don't like President Biden and I think he's a moron. I, if I go and say that, that suggests that I'm speaking out. And now obviously, that's a bad example, but that would fall within this social networking and code of ethics and be a violation. Because I'm making a statement that may contain, and, and maybe I used a profane word in describing my dislike of the president, that now, that has put this within the code of ethics and the social networking websites as a violation of those two clauses.
Well, the one that talks about, I, I'm just gonna, I, I, I don't, I hate doing wordsmithing during meetings like this. I'm just, I wish we'd had these discussions in the couple of weeks since these first came up. But be that, be that as it may.
But I have a designated time period here and like
I understand, but we could have, we could have had discussions about this in the two weeks that we were asking people for comments. But the social net, networking websites provision really talks about, it's a cautionary item. It says you need to periodically review proper decorum. It's not really, there's no hammer being put over people. It's a reminder that we need to be cognizant uh, of perceptions on those social medias. Because as we all know, notwithstanding that, you know, as Peter correctly points out, we don't speak for the board. But because we are, but because we are members of the board, um, words that we use can be interpreted by others to have greater weight than maybe, even if we give the disclaimer, I'm speaking only as an individual, not for the Board of Education. So that one I see as just to give, that is a reminder. It doesn't really say, and it doesn't really say anything problematic to me.
Okay, the, the next paragraph from the code of ethics, that's the hammer. Board members will refrain from inappropriate conduct in making public statements on Facebook and other social network sites, and will refrain from any disparagement of fellow board members or others on a personal, social, racial, or religious basis. Now, I'm not, so that goes beyond just your work as a board member, but you, Christina Downey, as a human being, sharing an opinion that someone else may think is a disparagement of another on a personal, social, racial, or religious basis. That would be a violation of this policy.
So I'm just ready, give me a second to read. If someone else has a comment in the meantime, I'm just reading it again, so.
And I don't mean to add comments while you're reading, but I would suggest that you, this policy reads a lot like a restraint on communication. And given that we've just passed the, the other pro- policy, which gives the expectations of board members, you've actually solved whatever problem you were attempting to achieve here without infringing upon one's ability to communicate without, by be sitting on a board, but otherwise having an opinion about something.
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't follow you there for a second.
Sure. So I think what, what was trying to be achieved here in this eh, in this use of, you know, social networks and comply, maybe a couple of these provisions could still stay in, like, for example, compliance of public records of law. But you're, the, the paragraphs in he, on the second policy that are governing speech, right, and saying what you should and should not say. Um, don't, it goes too far. It, it's an, it's a, a prior restraint on speech. But your, the policy that we just enacted on the expectations of how a board member should behave, I think are, cover any concern, cover my, co- cover any issues that you have in this one without being a prior restraint on communication.
I don't think it, they, this covers other things. It covers, you know, FOIA issues, public record laws issues.
But then take out, I understand it covered, it, this one seems to be a hodgepodge of a lot of things that don't necessarily go together. For example, compliance with public records, Freedom of Information Act, I get all that, but social networking and code of ethics don't belong in this. And maintaining confidentiality, I understand what we're supposed to do. That's an expectation of the board. Um, I just, this one really steps well beyond, um, you, I, I think well beyond what this board has the ability to control. And I don't think that you, you or anyone on this board has the ability to control what I put on my Twitter account. Um, but that's what this actually says it does.
Well, it doesn't say that in the social net, yeah, but it, in the social networking websites, I disagree. I don't think it just, this is just a, it's a cautionary tale. So I'm not
But in the code of ethics, it does.
Well, would you, if you struck out the words or others, does that change your point of view? I'm just asking. I'm not saying I, you know, we would do it, but I'm just asking the question.
I would take out the whole provision.
Okay. As I said, I, I wish we'd had the ability to have this conversation prior to tonight. Um, but other people, their hands up, let them speak.
All right, Mr. Share.
I hate doing this on the fly, so uh, I don't want to edit this thing on the fly. Um, I just think, you, you know, look, guys, this will come as no surprise to you. I can't, I can't come on board with this unless it's got a major rewrite to it. Because it's really clear what it is. And um, you know, you, Christina, I appreciate it. You can talk about the intent and all the rest of it. Look, there are two problems we have, right? We just lived with one of them, right? This was never a problem on the board when we didn't have this mechanism where we could go after an individual board member for what they say. Okay, I just had to sit and listen to, and as did the rest of you, all these people from the public say, please censure Peter's shirt for, and by the way, multiple of them said, for his comments on uh, social media. Right? I, look, we don't, I, I have a personal profile on social media, as do many of you do. You, nothing in the board can, should prevent me or prevent anybody from expressing a opinion from expressing a opinion in the public square as an individual. And the way you police what they say is not a board. It's policed by the electorate. If the electorate doesn't like the person, doesn't like what they say, this is solved at the ballot box. So that's the mechanism. We have to be sure every board member, I, I've said this, I hear things Joe Kelly says, and I hear things Chris, Karen Hirsch says, and I, I just, I can't believe they say them. But you know what? It's not my job to police that. Nobody appointed me because I'm on a board policing that. This is a, this is a, the way this is written, and particularly, you know, the connection to ethics and what have you, this is somebody trying to create speech codes and trying to create prior restraint of speech. And the way you don't want to solve that problem, in my mind, is if somebody's got a problem with such somebody said, pick up the phone, and I've said this 100 times, pick up the phone, call them and say, hey, I didn't like what you said here or there. Right? I don't think that reflects well on the board. I'd rather you not do that, or whatever. That's the way this needs to get solved. It doesn't get solved by creating this kind of legislation that creates nothing but free speech challenge problems. We don't need this. We need to be sure we're not pushing people into their remedy winds up being in the courts. That's the worst outcome in my book. So I realize philosophically, some of you are in a different place, or your political ideology puts you in a different place. I respect that. I, I, I can't, with the way this is written now, Christina, and I realize you're frustrated by it, but.
To be honest with you, what I'm frustrated by, Peter, frankly, is that I presented these two weeks ago, and I asked for comments, and I didn't get any till tonight. That's what I'm frustrated by, because these are all, could have been very productive discussions. And we had a PGC meeting earlier this week. I was available the last two weeks to talk about it, and I got enough, I got crickets. So that is my frustration.
Hey, I'm with you, I'm with you, sister. I've been talking about the Strategy Committee for five times, and I've sent more notes to the board, and I've got nothing back. So I'm totally with you on that, 100% in your frustration. It, it seemed, you know, we're all busy people. I wish we could all work on what everybody was priority for everybody else. But we are where we are, and look, it shouldn't come as any surprise. I've said many times on this board, I'm very concerned about efforts to try to control what people say, even if I don't like what they're saying. And besides that, I, that's why I said I'd really like to know if there was a legal opinion. Because candidly, this thing is fraught with all kinds of free speech issues. And as I say again, I'm not planning to be on the board.
If it makes you feel any better, the town attorney, that was one of her concerns, but when she really looked through it, that's why we made the changes to the appendix. So I, I mean.
Yeah, I, I get it. I realize you, I, I, I'm very respectful that you're trying to make it work. I, I, I get that. I totally get it. Look, I'm probably gonna get, I mean, it isn't gonna matter what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna vote, and other people are gonna vote. I, I just wanted to express, like, I, I, this is too tied up in ethics, and somebody's got to evaluate it, and somebody's got to decide what it is. And I think, by the way, the other parts that are in there, Christina, FOIA, we already have a policy on FOIA. Everybody knows what FOIA is. The board doesn't need to repeat that. That's an obligation under state law, any elected official, right? If we're not following that, we don't need a policy on that. People know they have that, they have that legal obligation. They have legal obligation not to defame people. You have the legal obligation not to libel people. You know, we don't need to replicate duplicative policies that are.
Well, I think they're not duplicative because they're pointing out that the danger that what we don't think is FOIA for a meeting can become such in the internet world. I think that's where tho- those are actually quite relevant, that, you know, four or five board members commenting on a thread on Facebook creates a meeting. That's not something people typically would think of, and that, I think for that, I, I disagree with you, because I do think we need that.
When they're commenting as a board member, when they're commenting as an individual, which they have an individual right to, and those are not abrogated because of this. I mean, this is, this is where this gets more, this is again, if board members don't know how to conduct themselves properly and how to separate their two worlds. Anyway, I, I've said my piece on, I'm just being redundant, and I, 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 I don't, you know, let other people share their views.
All right, Ms. Stowe.
So, it's lots of good comments, and whatever, you know, would have liked it earlier too, but we are where we are. Um, and I went through this with a fine tooth comb, because I, I hear you, and I'm not very active on social media. Probably my children are more than I am sadly, but um, I am this, there's a few things. One, I've now spent a long time on policy, probably longer than I'd like, um, but we started to adopt CAVE policies because they were standards, and we tried not to change them, I remember, and even the prior policy committees, because then we start to lose, like, all of the, the work that the Connecticut Association, Association of Boards of Education put into this, right? So I always sort of take that as my first look at any policy and sort of say, there has to be something to me that's sort of specific to Greenwich that makes me want to change this. That's number one. Um, and then I liked especially that this went through town council, and that was a good recommendation by, I know, one of, I think it was Peter, I'm not sure, but because she did highlight the Freedom of Speech piece, and that's where we, I know, spent some time in committee this week, making sure, and then I know Christina, you went back to town council again to make sure she was satisfied with it, and it sounds like they were. Um, so that got me comfortable. I think also, having served on, you know, company boards, I generally feel more comfortable, frankly, as a board member, when there is expectations on how one should act and have such decorum. And yes, all those things are there, and you're usually not on a professional board unless you've already been vetted, and that is understood, and you've had background checks and all that stuff, so that, but I do think we are a public board, and it's important to say, yes, absolutely, I am fine with all of these things, and I will happily sign up to this. So I did go through it, I hear you, but I am very comfortable with this policy based on all the review, and I know I'll be voting for it tonight.
Ms. Hirsch.
Oh, I, I was, I was gonna say, I know that thi- this particular policy as written without the changes even that we had made after passing it through town council has, have been adopted again by many, many different districts throughout Connecticut. So that, that gave me some level of comfort, because, you know, we passed it through our legal and did make some revisions based on those concerns. I, I will also note that I think it's really important for us to, to be aware that we have policies on use of social, internet, social networks for our students. We have policies on internet, social networks, and, you know, use of internet, social networks for our staff. And the reason that we, as the, you know, PGC put this word, is because we did not have one for members of the board. So, you know, again, we have it for students, staff, and administration. So, you know, it's exceptionally important. I think additionally, there has been a lot more use of social media, and I don't think that this policy, it's pretty clear that it's not discussing something as a, a, a personal page necessarily. It's pretty consistent when you talk about the Code of Ethics, it's refraining from inappropriate conduct and making public statements. And I would assume that would be in, you know, in more public groups as opposed to your private page. And it's, again, it's, it's sort of a reminder of things that, you know, we do need to maintain FOIA, we do need to not divulge confidential information on social networks as well, because, you know, we are still required to keep the, you know, FERPA as well as FOIA. And again, they're, you know, following that. The other areas that you guys were discussing is, are really guidelines, and they're just, I think to me, reminders. You know, and again, this is, you know, if you're using it, you may inadvertently violate. You know, you are, you know, it's important to, to, to not utilize social networks to conduct board business. And again, I, I think that this is really in line with the policies that we have for students, staff, and administration, and it's exceptionally important for us to have one as well in that regards. You know, so, you know, that, that was why I felt it was important, and I supported it as well.
All right, Ms. Kowalski.
Last comment, and we can put this to bed, obviously, my last comment. Karen, just to, just to follow up on a couple of things you said, look, just because, just because everybody else has done it, and this came down from CAVE, doesn't make it right, and doesn't mean that we should do it. And I don't know what they did with their vetting process or how they looked at this. It's kind of like, you know, the old saying, you know, if, if your friends jump off a bridge, you're gonna jump with them. And so that's why I, 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 I just don't think that works here. The other point that you mentioned, you said that you, you, you think that this would involve, you know, not, you know, your public page as opposed to your personal page. I personally don't know the difference of it, but the key word in that sentence was "you think", which means it's not clear from this policy what it covers and what it doesn't cover, which means it could be far reaching. And the other, the last comment, you said, "it may violate." Okay, it, it may violate, but who is the judge, jury, and executioner on that? And who's going to call me to task if they, if I make a comment that five of you disagree with? So I think that this steps beyond in those capacities. I think there are some good things in here, and I think there are some things that are overreaching and are potentially very much a slippery slope and headed down a very dangerous path.
I'll just respond to the one comment when I said something "may inadvertently violate," that's, and you were asking, who's the judge and jury? It's not a judge and jury. It's compliance with FOIA, and it's pretty clear, and that's why their wording is, you know, some of that use "may inadvertently violate." It's not some of us saying what you're writing, it's, it's, it's clear, it's based on FOIA and it's law.
It, it's outside of FOIA. What I'm talking about is the comments made on social networking, you know, just by an individual. It has nothing to do with the FOIA provision.
It's being, well, FOIA counts on, on social media as well, but it says that you must be mindful of FOIA when using social network sites, and you may inadvertently violate if you're not vigilant. That's, it's not saying you will, that you are, it's, it's, you just need to be mindful when you are, you know, sharing information, that's.
Right, but then it goes on to say, "board members will refrain from inappropriate conduct in making public statements on Facebook or other social networking sites." Will refrain. And who's going to be the judge of whether or not that conduct is, and is an inappropriate statement? That's vague and ambiguous.
Well, you know, when it comes to certain things, you, you need them to be slightly more open in that, and I think, I mean, I now need to go back, I'll read our board of, you know.
And that's the slippery slope that I'm talking about. What is inappropriate to you may not be to me. What is inappropriate to Mr. Kelly may not be to Mr..
I'm gonna go read the Board's Code of Ethics, but it basically said it's consistent with the Board Code of Ethics. My guess is that it is the same language, but again.
It's not. I went back and I read 9271, and that statement there with respect to our Code of Ethics has nothing to do with this provision here that you're talking about. They are totally different.
All right, I think that's the end of the discussion, so I'm gonna go ahead and listen to any motions they want to make to amend, or otherwise, I'm gonna call a question to the motion on the floor to approve 9327.1. Do a roll call. Bernstein is a yes. Downey? Christina, you're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, Hirsch?
Uh, yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Emphatically, no.
Olson?
Emphatically, yes.
Cher?
No.
And Stowe?
Absolutely, yes.
And that passes 6-2. Thank you very much. And the 9273 passed 8-0, by the way, I think I forgot to say that. We're gonna move on to our next action item, which is the monthly financial and staffing report. Before I let Sean talk, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the monthly financial and staffing report. Is there a second? All right, I see Stowe. That, that works for me. Sean, go ahead, take it away.
Okay. Hold on a sec. Okay. All right, I'll go right to the operating budget through February. We're at 96.6 million, which is a 59.1% attainment of our full year budget of 163.4. Year-to-year expense is up 0.4 million or 0.4%, driven by overall salary increases and higher-than-budgeted out-of-district-in-settlement tuition, plus COVID spending, not yet offset by, by the grants, you know, in munis. I'll get, I'll get into that in a sec. And partly offset by savings we've had to date in summer school, ESY, transportation, and the year-to-year impact of the pre-spend activity that we did in June. On the capital side, we're continuing to work down the available balances. As of the end of February, the available balance is down to $20.6 million, which is a reduction of $5.2 million from a month ago. On a year-to-year basis, we're down about 23.9, including the addition of the 2021 appropriation. On school lunch, year-to-date revenue, a million 347, which is continuing to lag significantly behind February last year when we booked 2.189 million. A year, a year-to-year decrease of about 840K or 38%. Cash sales are down 1,595 or 84%. Reimbursements are up 743K or 40, 404%, so way up on reimbursements, as expected. Expenses are year-to-date 1.898 million, which is down year-to-year by 406,000 or 18%. Drivers on the expense reduction, salaries and food costs, and, and partly offset by unbudgeted transportation costs. In terms of the full year forecast, we, as we've said in months before, we're gonna fall short significantly on revenue. I would say it's at least a million seven. Expenses, we're expecting to underrun by 800,000 before recovering the transportation expense, because we, remember, we've got that food delivery cost that we're gonna recover with COVID-related funds. So we'll underrun with that recovery. Expenses should underrun by about a million one after the recovery. And then from a bottom-line perspective, we're looking to fall short to budget by about 900K before the transportation recovery. And with that transportation recovery, we'll probably fall short of budget by about 600,000. The next item in the package is just a, an update on out-of-district tuition and settlements. The latest assessment as of March 8th, total of settlements and out-of-place tuition, we're at 6.9 in terms of actuals, year-to-date actuals plus encumbrances. And we have some pending cases of about 700K. So if all of that materializes, we're looking at about 7.6 million, which would be $2.2 million over budget, or about 340,000 higher than what we forecasted at the beginning of the year. The next chart in the package is a COVID grant update, and it's been totally reformatted. You know, the first column in the COVID chart is, as we have been reporting over the last several months, all of the year-to-date expense, whether it's supplies, PPE, services, and then we have staffing, the biggest of which is the certified staffing. So, and then the next four columns is how we are going to recover those expenses, whether it's the ESER 1, which was $758,000, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which is a million 203,000. And then ESER 2, which incidentally, we just found out on Friday, previously it was a 3.7. previously it was a $3.78 million coming to us. That now is updated on Friday, we're going to get $4.3 million. So we got an additional half a million dollars. And then the fourth one is the American Recovery Plan, which I heard this earlier in the, you know, in one of the public comments, there was a reference to a Greenwich Time article, and I believe it was Dan Har. I think he's an associate editor for the Greenwich Time or First Media. Couple of weeks ago, reported that Greenwich was going to receive $47 million, of which 32 was going to come to the school district. And I've heard many numbers over the last several weeks, but nothing that high. On Friday, we did get some confirmation from, from Congressman Heim's office that we will be getting 10,215,000, so still pretty good. Where, where that money gets targeted for is, as far as the ARP, we're just getting the facts now, but we know that at least 20% of that 10 million has to address learning loss in the district. And then there's, they're targeting the remaining 80%. There's, there's a dozen or so specific areas where we can spend that money. But they made it very clear that it's not to be used for supplanting the budget. The fund, the ARP funds need to be used by September 30 of '24. The ESER 2 funds need to be used by September 30 of 2023. And the ESER 1 funds to be used by September 30, 2022. Let me see if there's anything else I wanted to include in there. Now, that's, that's kind of it, I just, but the chart has been updated to show how we would propose to spend the money. Obviously, on the ESER 2 and the ARP, those are, you know, pretty new news. And so we don't know yet how we're going to spend that, although we will. The, the headcount related, the staffing will most likely be recovered through the ESER 2 grant. And then yet to be determined is how that ARP grant will be spent. And that's something we're going to be working on over the next several weeks. Questions?
Sean, thank you for reformatting that, this is puberty scene. I, I think it's really, really helpful to see it like that. I guess I've got some questions about how much of that money is actually already received and how much of it will be received by June 30th? Because I want to make sure we're, we're in a position to pay our, our payroll through June. You know, I know, I know money's going to start getting tight, we're over on special ed right now until the interim comes through, we're laying out money from North Miami. So can you kind of give us a sense of when that money is going to hit the, hit our accounts?
The ESER 1, 758, it's been received. The coronavirus relief fund of 1.2 million, we're in the process now of, of requesting those funds. And the, the 4.268 million will be finalizing how we're going to propose using those funds with the state. And once we do that, then we could actually request the, the transfer of funds. The ARP, I heard this morning on the way to work, that some of those funds would be released to the schools across the country very quickly. I don't know what that means, but sounds like it's within the next month or so.
So, is it?
Yet to be determined.
Is, is it your understanding though, that we're, at least through ESER 2, that we'll have those funds in, in the end by June 30th?
Yes.
Because that covers off a lot of our, our COVID outlay, which is.
Yes, yep. Exactly.
Fantastic, all right, Mr. Cher.
Sean, I didn't, I, I get a little confused in this conversation, and the reason I get confused in this conversation is it's like we talk about the Board of Ed like it's an isolated entity with its own budgets. And so I get confused by this, because you didn't talk about the town of Greenwich. The town of Greenwich has given us effectively a blank check for COVID-related expenses. So I know you keep talking about COVID-related expenses, like the only money we have is money coming from the federal government. So I get a little confused in this conversation, and Peter, maybe Bernstein's comment about cash management? I don't understand that one either.
I think, I think the comment about the blank check, Peter, quite honestly, I mean, you are absolutely right that that was committed. But that was before we found out about all these different grants. So.
Yeah, well, they, they would obviously use the grants to offset, but if we run beyond the grants in any particular time, they've committed to fill in all those gaps, right? And the last grant of roughly $11 million, 10 million, that may be restricted, but the other three aren't particularly restricted.
Yeah, the ESER, the ESER 2 has some restrictions.
Yeah, but they're de minimis, right? So if they're really, it's very broad in what can be a COVID expense.
Generally, yeah.
So that's why I get a little confused in this conversation, because we never talk about the amount that we're expecting to be ET to infill and cover all these. It makes it sound like we may or may not have enough money. So I don't understand that part. My other one is really a question. We have, I think it was revealed in, I know it was revealed in prior discussions of this. We have numerous expenses, the one I'm particularly focused on is special education expenses that we have higher expenditures we have to make because of COVID. Right?
That's right.
Okay, so have you identified all those expenses and send that, transfer that out of the Special Education General Operating Budget into the COVID expense budget so that it would be covered by the town of Greenwich?
Well, I mean, I've looked into that, and my opinion, for what it's worth, is that I, I would rather not use COVID grants to cover that, because those expenses will be, because they're related to special ed, we'll already, we'll already be getting 70 cents on the dollar back. Or the, the taxpayers of, of Greenwich will getting, be getting 70 cents on the dollar back through the excess cost grant.
So, no, I understand that part. My, my, my point is, is that the narrative, over and over and over again, has been, we're short on special education. We don't have enough money. That's been what's been communicated endlessly, it's what the public understands. What I don't, and I get the whole point of, you want to leave it over here procedurally, so maybe we have some recovery from the state, and, and I get that part. But it, the narrative out there is, the narrative in, in, among special education parents is, the town of Greenwich is underfunding special education, which I, I don't, I don't understand that, because in a lot of cases, our increased expenses are the result of COVID. And if I'm not wrong, the town of Greenwich is fully committed to funding that in addition to our regular general, a rent of regular allocation for special education. I, I just, and I'm trying to find out, is, have you moved, have you, in the discussion with the town of Greenwich? Have you said to them, oh, of this out-of-district placements and so on and so forth, X dollars of that is marked as COVID? And if we don't get money back from the state, let's say we get 70 cents, I'm expecting the town of Greenwich to cough up the remaining 30 cents of those dollars, because it's in the COVID budget. It shouldn't be funded out of our general operating budget, where we have to transfer dollars from some other general operating account into special education to cover that. And that's what I keep hearing. And, and I, I just, that doesn't sound right to me. If it's a COVID expense, it's a COVID expense. That, that should not be commingled with our general operating budget, and we have to eat into our general operating budget someplace else to cover that. That's specifically what the town of Greenwich said that they would cover? And I want to be sure we're holding it to them and we're getting every dollar from them that we should.
Well, I'm going to have conversations with, obviously with the, the town as it relates to the out-of-district tuition. We've been reporting that on a monthly basis, and that's essentially what we've been requested to, to track it, to report it monthly, and that's what we're doing. And I think at the end of the year, you know, the intent would be to, you know, state our position as to where we are on that out-of-district tuition, which was committed to us back about a year ago. And as far as the, as far as the, the COVID related, related, it's really not a material amount, I think it's about $20,000. So if you factor in the 70%, 70 cents on the dollar, I mean, we're talking, we're talking about $6,000.
Okay, I, okay, fair enough, and I'll say this. And this is my great frustration with what the administrators tell us. We were in a meeting and they told us we had substantially increased special education expenses because of COVID. I'm sorry, I don't, when someone says that to me, on a $160 million budget, I wouldn't think $20,000 is a substantial increase to COVID. I'm shocked to hear that that's the number. So I don't know which administrator in the meeting with us told us they had dramatically increased.
Was it me? Peter, was it me? Was it me? Was it me that said that?
I, I don't recall. I know it was that.
I don't think I said that.
No, I, 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 I wouldn't expect it was you that said that.
All right.
But, you know, so what you're telling me is, we heard that in a meeting. I brought this up a couple of times and nobody's disputed it, and I appreciate you now sizing that at $20,000, I don't even know why administrator even brought it up.
Okay.
Ms. Hirsch?
Um, I had a quick, well, a quick question or two. I know that ESER 1 and ESER 2 funds came to us with very specific details as to how to use them. I know you mentioned with the ARP that we know thus far that 20% of that needs to address learning loss.
For the, for the ARP, yes.
ARP, but we don't really know, we don't know the other specific areas for the other 80%.
We do, we do, there's a, there's a long list that we just received on Friday, so we've got to digest that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'll go, I'll go hunting for that. Because I was going to say, I know, you know, we certainly have increased in learning loss in areas that need to be focused on for all of our students and especially for special education students who many of them have had in-person services that, that they weren't able to get, whatever. But for out-of, with this cover out-of-district, I don't think it does, because that's not necess, that's not COVID-related, that's separate.
Yeah, that's, that's not COVID-related. I mean, all I will tell you is that, as I said on the outset, you know, we're, our, our, our expense is growing year-to-year by 0.4%. And, and that's, you know, some of the drivers are our overall salary increase, but we do have a significant amount of savings. So we do have savings, you know, especially in ESY, summer school, that's already known, it's already booked. And, and then transportation continued, we continue to save money there. And.
I, I just don't want to accidentally use something to cover an expense that we know is going to be continuing for years. You know, for instance, for out-of-district, you know, tuition. And then, then have it come back to us by a surprise. But, you know, and this is something, again, I, you know, are there things or requirements to cover for social, emotional support for our students? I know we keep hearing about.
That is, that is part of it, yes, absolutely. That's a legitimate expense.
Once we have the opportunity to see exactly how that can be used to support social, emotional learning, the anxiety that our students are feeling, I really would like to, to hear or have a more deep discussion on that. So I know we've been asking, and I know budget meetings, we were asking about more support in those areas. If we're going to get funds that can help cover that, I'd like to see how we can use them.
Yeah, the only thing we need to be careful of is, you know, if we do staff up in certain areas, we got to be careful that money runs out, you know, in '23 and '24. So if we're going to keep that staff on, that new staff, we're going to have to offset it somewhere else.
Well, anyway, I look forward to getting more information and having, having a discussion on that, thanks.
Yeah.
Mr. Downey, try to take us home.
Just like one final question on me, these are the expense numbers you have listed in your first column, Sean. Those are to date or they're projected for the full year?
For the non-staffing, so.
For the non-staffing.
For the non-staffing, it's to date. For the certified, that 1.860 million, that's a full year estimate, so it's kind of a mixed bag.
Okay, because do, do you think it'd be possible then, if we're, because if we're going to start having discussions about the, the excess, you know, these grants, we probably should project out with the rest of the year on the non-staffing? I'm sure you have it somewhere, but to incorporate that into the analysis.
Yeah, the, the, the non-staffing piece, you know, kind of has slowed down, as you can imagine, we did a lot of purchasing in the, in the
Right.
first part of the year. And I mentioned the certified staffing, that 1.8 million, that's a full year estimate. And we are continuing to get some, like the non-certified, that's police and custodial. And the certified employees, you know, due to delayed BPTs. Yeah, I mean, that's, a lot of that happened in the summer, so.
Okay.
So.
Maybe for our budget, maybe for our budget meeting next week, because if we're going to start brainstorming about usage of the rescue plan funds, maybe
Yeah, that's good.
we might want to just pull those up and then we at least don't want, don't want to spend it twice.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and call the question, so it's to approve the monthly financial and staffing report. Yes, Downey? Christina, you're muted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
And Stowe?
Yes.
All right, one last action item, is to approve budget transfers. I'll go ahead and move to approve the budget transfers as presented, is there a second for that motion? Thank you, Mr. Kelly, Sean.
Okay, the first one is a transfer from multiple accounts totaling 12,500 to, and these are multiple accounts in Central Middle School to AV equipment. So there are purchases of AV equipment at Central Middle School and using multiple other accounts. And so that's the first one. And the second one is a transfer of several maintenance accounts totaling 16,130 to cover the cost of boots, which are required from a bargaining unit standpoint agreement and other non-COVID protective equipment. And then the third one is a transfer of $50,000 within maintenance accounts from maintenance of building to building and construction materials. Those are the three.
Thank you, any questions? I don't see any hands up for discussion, so I'm going to just go ahead and move right to a vote. Bernstein is a yes, Downey?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
And Stowe?
Yes.
Thank you. Sean, I presume we're going to see more transfers as we get closer to the end of the year, is that the?
Well, you know, we have the, the mass, massive transfers occurs in the July timeframe, but yes, we will have more transfers.
Right.
And, and we're going to start to slow things down in terms of, you know, purchase orders. You know, we've already put out word to everybody that if you, if you had a purchase order that was initiated back in, you know, the summer or, or September, and, you know, most of it's been used, and now you just have a balance in there, we, we need to shut those down, we need to close them off to get a jump on, you know, where we're going to land at the end of the year.
All right, thank you, we'll keep an eye for that. All right, we're at agenda planning, anybody have anything? Now, will, Mr. Cher, strategic plan, I take it when you're ready, and something else?
Yeah, what, I, I guess I, I probably should have asked this question back when Tony was commenting, but I need to figure out if I would like to have an item on the agenda. Tony, is it? Got calls from parents indicating that we're training our staff in, I guess, bias and racism training, and we've asked them to. And we've asked them, we've asked the staff to read uh, White Fragility, the book White Fragility? Is that correct?
That's an administrative uh, leadership team that has been reading this school year, the staff, no.
Is the staff gonna, is that gonna be extended to the staff in the future?
No, we haven't discussed that at all.
Okay, because what, um, Peter, would I, um, our board hasn't taken up this question at all um, this year, which I think is a little bit problematic. Um, but I think we need to, before any of this goes forward. I think the board needs to provide some direction uh, to the administration um, on this subject. Uh, and I'd like to schedule a session where the uh, superintendent comes in and explains what she's proposing to, what she has done and what she's proposing to do on uh, to improve anti-bias training in our employees.
I think we actually talked about possibly doing that in April, so we can, we can revisit that. When we have our chairman.
I, I, cause I, I'll tell you.
I think we were actually already looking to do that, Peter, so thank you for calling that out.
When is it scheduled?
I think we were looking to do it at our April business meeting.
Yes, they're already preparing for the presentation.
Yep, so already got it, thank you. Alright, uh, Ms. Kowalski?
Um, thanks, so I think along those lines, um, so I, I've actually, in the last week, gotten quite a bit of reach out from parents in our middle schools, particularly in one of the English classes that are being taught critical race theory. Um, as a required, and as part of their required assignment, were asked to complete a checklist written by Peggy McIntosh to address their white privilege. Um, and I understand that this was presented to eleven and twelve year olds, not eleventh and twelfth grade, eleven and twelve year olds. And I just, I wanted to understand how this curriculum is being introduced and what, why in the English class? And furthermore, um, I, that it would need board review and approval. So I guess the question is, to the extent that this is being taught, where and how? And then I think we need to have that curriculum brought in front of the board to have review questioned and get it approved.
Yeah, I might just address that, it was one classroom, um, and there were some, there were, well, I wanna say one or two parents that had reached out to the principal. This is not something that was across our district at all. Um, and it was addressed with that parent uh, one-on-one, and it was not teaching rate, um, critical theory. It actually was biased, which is in the curriculum. Um, and the survey was modeled after a survey that would often be used um, with older students, but it was modified down for, to be more appropriate for middle school. And our teachers do uh, improvise and create teaching materials. Um, but it, it's been portrayed differently, I think, than um, what the teacher has been able to share with us that actually occurred.
Okay, yeah, well, I just, out of curiosity, could I get the, can a copy of the survey be circulated to the board that was used?
Sure, I mean, I, I think I may have it, I think that she actually sent it to us yesterday.
Great.
Alright, Mr. Kelly?
Peter, I, I think at one point, uh, we had uh, talked about a building committee for phase two of uh, Cardinal Stadium project. Uh, whether we could have one or not, I'd certainly like to have that discussion, cause I am uh, meeting with uh, with the RTM or District Nine about structuring uh, their new wording on how they wanna implement their plan on building committees. So I think we certainly, as a board, should have that discussion. And uh, and as I'm dealing with the RTM with it as well, I, I'd certainly like to be aligned or in sync with that.
Okay, um, we'll see if we can fit that into April or May, and obviously, yeah, there's some time there. Alright, Ms. Olson?
Yeah, I'll be really quick, and I can't believe making comment at twelve eighteen at night, but um, just, Tony, to go back to what was being said about, you know, um, uh, the, the social emotional learning piece, um, I think it is really important that we, starting as young as possible. I know in a lot of schools, in the school where I work, and a lot of other schools, that we do, we do teach anti-racism at a young age. So I'd, I'd be interested in that information as well, I think it's um, it's um, it's important. And it, it, like, like you said, they do teach things that are age appropriate, all the way down to the younger ages. So I've interested in following up on that conversation as well.
Okay, Mr. Share? Alright, you're muted, Peter.
Sorry, I just got confused by what Mr. Kelly just said. Um, as an item on building committees, that makes sense to me. The part that didn't make sense to me was um, we're, working with District Nine on building committees on behalf of the board, I don't, I don't understand that.
Well, this is uh, agenda planning, but I think District Nine has reached out to, to try to understand where the board uh, would be interested in doing that. And as Joe rightfully noted, we should discuss that as a board, as opposed to individual members, so he's looking for uh.
Yeah, I would, I would think.
Why we need to discuss it as a board, anyway, this is still agenda planning, so I don't think we're gonna get deep into that right now.
Well, when, when, when is this gonna be on the agenda? Cause I think we need to cease and desist with any conversations with outside bodies until such time as we have discussed it as a board and can provide guidance. That's what I'm trying to understand.
I understand it, they're not bringing it to the RTM until June, so we will try to get it in in April if, if we can, and if not, we'll do it in May. We will, we will definitely find time for that. Alright, uh, and then Ms. Hirsch? You're muted.
This is what happens after midnight, I'm tired, so I apologize. Um, I just wanted to note that Karen Kowalski and I had mentioned at our last update on the steering committee that we were going to ask to bring uh, our discussion forward to the next meeting. Uh, but I think we were gonna be moving that, not in April, it will be at some point in one of the dates in May. Just wanted to, so that if you, if you had it scheduled, you don't need to for, for the next meeting.
Okay, obviously, uh, you guys should, just let me know when you have a better sense, so we can keep it on there. Uh, and just to remind the board, uh, April eighth had been styled as a retreat, obviously, as Karen just said, uh, PGC's not ready. Uh, we're likely converting that into an executive session, I sent the board an email about that, so please hold that date on your calendar. Uh, with that, Mr. Kelly, did you have a motion you wanted to make?
Well, sure, first, happy spring, everybody, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'm gonna happily second that motion, and Bernstein is a yes, Downey?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Share? Peter's, and Stowe?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much, everybody, especially the twenty-nine attendees that stuck it out to the end. Have a good night.
Night.